Like to begin the meeting, the regular meeting of July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty four, the Gurnee Village Board. Roll call, please.
Thorson. Tortinson.
Here.
Woodside.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Garner.
Here.
O'Brien.
Present.
Baumz.
Present.
All right, if you'd all like to stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. I just wanted to, just so it's not a surprise later on in the event that it happens, we're currently under a tornado watch, so we're okay. However, if it moves to tornado warning, then the, this meeting will be adjourned. At that point, it looks like eight P. M. possibly is when that would be, but can't predict the weather and don't want to place people in danger. So if it doesn't happen, then we can go as long as it takes. So why don't we just start with the approval of the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by trustee Baumis, second by trustee O'Brien. Roll call, please.
Tortinson.
Yes.
Woodside.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baumz.
Aye.
Six Aye.
All right, Austin?
Item number one, approval of the minutes from the June seventeenth, two thousand and twenty four meeting. Item number two, approval of setting a bid date July twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty four for the Oak Plain Road sidewalk path at Kingsway North. Item number three, approval of setting a bid date of July thirtieth, two thousand and twenty four for miscellaneous drainage projects. Item number four, approval of granting fireworks permit for gurney days on August tenth, two thousand and twenty four. Item number five, approval of issuing a raffle license and waiving the fee and bond requirement for the Exchange Club of Gurnee. Item number six, approval of the Information Systems Division's recommendation to purchase one year of Cisco SmartNet maintenance services from Presidio Network Solutions Group, LLC, at a total cost of sixty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents. State of Illinois Department of Innovation and Technology contract. Item number seven, approval of Police Department recommendation to renew Priority Dispatch for Quality Performance Review subscription in the amount of twenty thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars. Expense eligible for one hundred percent reimbursement of the N. L. C. C. E. T. S. B. Item number eight, approval of Fire Department recommendation to purchase twelve Bullard thermal imaging cameras from Dinges Fire Company in the amount of sixty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Item number nine, approval of Fire Department recommendation to purchase a Hearst battery-operated extrication equipment package from Air One Equipment, Inc., in the amount of thirty-five thousand, three hundred and ninety dollars, Fire Department Unit thirteen, twenty-one. Item number ten, approval of Public Works Department recommendation to award two thousand and twenty-four Streetlight Program Directional Boring Contract to Pertono Construction in the amount of sixty-three thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty cents. Item number eleven, approval of Engineering Division recommendation to award two thousand and twenty-four Crack Ceiling Program to Patriot Pavement Maintenance at a cost not to exceed seventy-five thousand, Lake County Municipal League Cooperative Purchasing Program. Item number twelve, approval of Engineering Division recommendation to award two thousand and twenty-four Pavement Marking Program to High Star Traffic at a cost not to exceed seventy-five thousand, Lake County Municipal League Cooperative Purchasing Program. Item number three, thirteen, approval of granting a temporary Class Nine liquor license to Saint Apostle Church for an event to be held on August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four at six four zero one Gauges Lake Road. Item number fourteen, approval of payroll for period ending June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four in the amount of one million, eighty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety-one dollars and ninety-one cents. Item number fifteen, approval of payroll for period ending June twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four in the amount of one million, forty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents. Item number sixteen, approval of bills for period ending July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four in the amount of two million, four hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and six cents.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by trustee Ross, second by trustee Garner. Roll call, please.
Tortinson.
Yes.
Woodside.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baumz.
Aye.
Six Aye.
All right, motion carries. There'll be, so we have, move on to petitions and communications. We have one item in particular, which is the approval of a proclamation designate in August fourth through tenth, two thousand and twenty-four as national stop on red week in the village of Gurnee. In nineteen ninety-eight, the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration and American Trauma Society established national stop on red week to raise public awareness about preventable and deadly aggressive driving. During the first week of August, the goal of the National Stop on Red Week campaign is to continue to educate the public on the dangers of red light running. Now, therefore, I, Thomas Hood, Mayor of Gurnee, do hereby proclaim that the week of August fourth through August ten is hereby designated as national stop on red week in the village of Gurnee. I urge everyone to reduce crashes, injuries, and tragic loss of life by stopping for red lights. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee O'Brien, second by trustee Ross. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. There's also next, the committee of the whole meeting, which we do not have anything for, so.
So moved.
So we'll move to cancel. So is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by trustee Garner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And. All right, so that's the end of the petitions and communications. There's no reports. On to old business. Approval ordinance, two thousand and twenty-four.
Fifty-three.
Granting four special use permits pursuant to the Gurnee zoning ordinance to allow installation of two freestanding signs for Gurnee Community Church located at four five 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 Old Grand Avenue. Austin?
Yeah, so this item was on the June third, two thousand and twenty-four Village Board Agenda. At that time, the Village Board decided to continue the matter and allow Gurnee Community Church to respond to feedback provided at the meeting, should it choose so. Since the meeting, the Gurnee Community Church has not made any revisions or changes to the signs. Instead, the petitioner provided several studies in response to the electronic message center, safety concerns, and its relationships with driver's visual behavior and traffic characteristics. To recap, the Gurnee Community Church is requesting to install two new signs, both of which require special use permits. The church intends to replace the existing sign along Grand Avenue, install a new sign at the northeast corner of the site, and remove the wood sign along Old Grand Avenue. The sign along Grand Avenue is proposed to be internally illuminated, two-sided screen box sign cabinet with raised letters mounted on two aluminum pole covers, and a masonry stone base that matches the building. The sign measures fourteen point seven five feet in height and seventy-six square feet in area, including a thirty-six square feet electronic message center. The non-electronic portion of the sign cabinet features the church's new logo and name. As you know, the EMC signs require a special use permit and are subject to ten restrictions that are outlined in the staff memo. The height of the proposed sign would be same as the existing sign, which has been in place for sixty years. The height exceeds code and also requires a special use permit. The sign is also exceeds the maximum sign area. Code allows a maximum of fifteen square feet freestanding sign by right up to eighteen point seven five square feet through the minor sign exception process by sixty-one square feet. However, the overall size is smaller to the existing sign. The new sign at the northeast corner of the, is proposed to be internally illuminated, single face mounted sign with an aluminum sign cabinet attached to a masonry stone base that would match the building. The sign is six feet tall and twenty-seven square feet in area, similar to the sign along Old Grand Avenue. The sign includes the church's new logo, name, and a detachable panel announcing the church's events. Signs exceeds the sign area by twelve feet and requires a special use permit. In order to compensate for some of the additional sign square footage requested, the petitioner has offered to remove the existing double postwood and sign along Old Grand Avenue, which is approximately fifteen square feet in size, and disrepair non-conforming to the setback in landscaping requirements. The requests were before the PZB on May fifteenth and received the unanimous favorable recommendation. It is now ready for your consideration.
Thank you, Austin. So the petitioners are, oh, had contacted me, and I believe they have the, and a presentation for a reduction. Is that right, from what we have? Yeah?
Yes.
So if you have something you could pass out to the trustees?
So the one you are looking at right now, that is thirty-two square feet. The second option we're proposing, guys, brings it down to twenty-four square feet.
So if you could just go back to the microphone if there's some more questions. So I'll just go to my right to see if there's any questions or comments. Trustee Ross?
And this, will the, the letters that appear in the electronic message board, will they be larger than the, the letters for the church sign?
Um, it depends on the message. Gurnee, I know, does have a minimum of six, they must be six inches tall, so they will meet that restriction of the six inch tall letters. So.
So how tall are the letters above it?
Which one on the drawing in front of you right now, or the?
Community church letters.
So the Gurnee Community Church letters are six and five eighths inch.
Anybody else to my right that has any questions or comments? Trustee O'Brien?
So the new one you just gave us, is that reducing the overall electronic message board sec, to make it same size or less than the Alec sign that we asked you to do last time?
Correct. The Alec sign, well, the Alec sign is three by nine, so that's a twenty-seven square feet. This one would be three by eight, so this would bring it down to twenty-four.
Thank you.
So this would be slightly smaller than Alec.
Anybody to my left? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by trustee Baumis, second by trustee O'Brien. Roll call, please.
Tortinson.
Yes.
Woodside.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baumz.
Aye.
Six Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Just to be clear, it's this one.
Right. It's the smaller one.
If, if I could say something just for a minute, on behalf of the church, I want to thank you. I, we've been in the village a long time, long before any of us were born. The message board is an important part of our existence. Many people have said they've come to the church because they've seen that sign and what was on there, whether it was a funny message or whether it was events that were going on. The current sign we have now is in disrepair. We can't repair it anymore, and I know you don't like that sign anyway. So that's why we wanted to upgrade and, and get into some technology, and just have a much better looking sign with a new church logo. And again, I just appreciate the opportunity to work with you and, and give you a nice looking sign.
All right. Thank you very much. And I think that trustee Ross's comments, just so that the motion, to clarify the motion, just that it's the twenty-four, twenty-four square foot version, not the larger version, right? Is that your point?
Yes, and then the other, other sign is the same. They still get the variance for that one.
Correct. Correct. Okay, thanks. So on to new business. Item number one, approval of ordinance, two thousand and twenty-four.
Fifty-four.
Adding one Class One liquor license by amending section six dash fifty-six of Article Two of Chapter Six of the Gurnee Municipal Code entitled Alcoholic Beverages, Destino Restaurante, fifty-one oh one Washington Street, Suite thirty-two dash twenty-six. This is the old, not that old, Chocolate Sanctuary Restaurant.
So Destino Restaurante is expected to open in mid-August in the former Chocolate Sanctuary space at Saratoga Square. Owner Danny Agados grew up in his family's restaurant business, built a twenty-five year hospitality career in management and operation positions with several major restaurant group, and lives in Lake County. Destino will be open for dinner every night of the week, Sunday through Thursday until nine P. M., and Friday and Saturday until ten P. M. Later this fall, Destino will add a lunch menu. From eleven A. M. to two P. M., the Destino menu features Northern Italian specialties, fish, chicken, steak, salads, pasta, prepared with homemade sauces and capped off with a variety of dessert choices, including homemade terrace and masseuse. Reasonable prices and a friendly, casual ambiance will complement the sophisticated decor of the restaurant, which includes three distinct dining rooms, the Sofia Loren, Tony Bennett, and Frank Sinatra, capable of seating ninety, forty, and ten people respectively for private events. In addition to the existing outdoor patio refreshed with new furniture, flowers, and lighting, Destino has enhanced the landscaping across the front, and will be adding a new sidewalk seating for a total indoor and outdoor seating capacity of two hundred and seventy-five. Police Department has conducted all the necessary background checks and finds nothing to preclude issuing the license. It is now ready for your consideration.
All right, so we'll handle that motion, and then if you guys would like to say a few words, that would be good for us. So, all right, so is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Garner?
Second.
Second by trustee Baumis. Roll call, please.
I gave out. Tortinson.
Yes.
Woodside.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baumz.
Aye.
Six Aye.
Motion carries, and I know that the Destino group is here, so if you guys would like to step up to the microphone and maybe tell us a little bit more about your restaurant.
First of all, thank you so much for having us here today, and thank you for your time and consideration. This restaurant is very special to me and my family because it's, it's exactly what it is. It's family. It's going to be very, very casual dining. You're going to come in, you're going to see the wonderful staff that had been with me for over fifteen years. The food is like home cooking. It's not going to be really, really sophisticated, sophisticated, as we say. It's casual. Chicken, fish, like you said, Mary, very, very light, refreshing, and it's going to be very, very friendly and casual. And we're excited to be here in the village of Gurnee. We couldn't be more thrilled of meeting everyone, and we hope and continue to be here for a long, long time.
I just wanted to add, I'm Kevin Girrell, counsel for Destino. With us today is also Mr. Pierce, who is the liquor manager you see on the application. He has an impressive resume in the hospitality industry. He's actually has forty-six years of experience. Previously, he was the general manager at Fred Tesco's in Northbrook. He had that position for three years, and prior to that, he was at the Peninsula Hotel in downtown Chicago for fourteen years, where he was, again, he was working in the food and beverage department for the hotel. I think you see two very experienced gentlemen here that know a lot about the industry, that are going to do the right by the community. They're going to make sure that minors are not going to be served there. I wouldn't anticipate that this would be the type of place for them anyways. Also, you're going to see that in terms of hours of operation, it's relatively modest, again, in line with their intentions to be a more family-oriented restaurant. They'll also, they hope to have expansive catering business and also have private events held at this restaurant. So happy to answer any other questions. We appreciate the background about the application and the intention here that's been read off, but here for further questions as well.
We're just excited, and we love independence in town. We love our chains too, but have a special place in our hearts for independence, and Chocolate Sanctuary wasn't empty too long, but really appreciate that you come here, and in talking to Danny, I just, his passion for the business, I'm really looking forward to seeing what comes out of that. So I know the people of Gurnee will really enjoy your restaurant. So thanks for choosing us.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, so we'll handle that motion, and then if you guys would like to say a few words, that would be good for us. So, all right, so is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Garner?
Second.
Second by trustee Baumis. Roll call, please.
I gave out. Tortinson.
Yes.
Woodside.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
Aye.
Baumz.
Aye.
Six Aye.
Motion carries, and I know that the Destino group is here, so if you guys would like to step up to the microphone and maybe tell us a little bit more about your restaurant.
First of all, thank you so much for having us here today, and thank you for your time and consideration. This restaurant is very special to me and my family because it's, it's exactly what it is. It's family. It's going to be very, very casual dining. You're going to come in, you're going to see the wonderful staff that had been with me for over fifteen years. The food is like home cooking. It's not going to be really, really sophisticated, sophisticated, as we say. It's casual. Chicken, fish, like you said, Mary, very, very light, refreshing, and it's going to be very, very friendly and casual. And we're excited to be here in the village of Gurnee. We couldn't be more thrilled of meeting everyone, and we hope and continue to be here for a long, long time.
I just wanted to add, I'm Kevin Girrell, counsel for Destino. With us today is also Mr. Pierce, who is the liquor manager you see on the application. He has an impressive resume in the hospitality industry. He's actually has forty-six years of experience. Previously, he was the general manager at Fred Tesco's in Northbrook. He had that position for three years, and prior to that, he was at the Peninsula Hotel in downtown Chicago for fourteen years, where he was, again, he was working in the food and beverage department for the hotel. I think you see two very experienced gentlemen here that know a lot about the industry, that are going to do the right by the community. They're going to make sure that minors are not going to be served there. I wouldn't anticipate that this would be the type of place for them anyways. Also, you're going to see that in terms of hours of operation, it's relatively modest, again, in line with their intentions to be a more family-oriented restaurant. They'll also, they hope to have expansive catering business and also have private events held at this restaurant. So happy to answer any other questions. We appreciate the background about the application and the intention here that's been read off, but here for further questions as well.
We're just excited, and we love independence in town. We love our chains too, but have a special place in our hearts for independence, and Chocolate Sanctuary wasn't empty too long, but really appreciate that you come here, and in talking to Danny, I just, his passion for the business, I'm really looking forward to seeing what comes out of that. So I know the people of Gurnee will really enjoy your restaurant. So thanks for choosing us.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. You're all set. It's approved, and.
Thank you.
Opening, grand opening is?
Mid-August.
Mid-August, okay. All right. So item number two, approval of Fire Department recommendation to purchase thirty-seven portable radios, two mobile radios, and associated hardware, software, and setup from Chicago Communications in the amount of three hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and seventy-seven cents. Transition to Starcom twenty-one radio, State of Illinois contract CMS three six one eight eight five zero. Expense eligible for one hundred percent reimbursement from the N. L. C. C. E. T. S. B. Austin?
So you will recall the Police Department transition to the Starcom twenty-one radio network effective June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Starcom twenty-one stands for State Radio Voice Communications for the Twenty-First Century. It is a seven, eight-hundred megahertz apco project, twenty-five interoperable digital trunk statewide voice radio communications network. The network is owned and operated by Motorola Incorporated and leased back to the State of Illinois for its use. It was built to public safety standards and is available to governmental as well as non-governmental bodies, subject to state approval and contractual requirements being met. Subscribers are responsible for purchasing their equipment, training, and monthly service fees. The Starcom twenty-one radio network allows interoperability between subscribing agencies and utilizes encryption technology, which prohibits the public from being able to monitor sensitive radio traffic. The fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five approved budget of the Northeast Lake County Consolidated Emergency Telephone Board included the replacement of all the Gurnee Fire Department's mobile and portable radios with Starcom twenty-one units. The Gurnee Fire Department currently operates on a VHF radio network for its main dispatch and fire ground frequencies. With the move to Lake Com and the reorganization of fire dispatch frequencies countywide, the fire service is looking to follow the lead of the police service and move dispatch channels to the Starcom, the Starcom frequencies. Utilization of a countywide network is very important, as the current VHF radio networks that are in place only cover portions of the county and would not allow the fire service to consolidate in the most efficient manner. The village of Gurnee will purchase the radios and then be reimbursed by the N. L. C. C. E. T. S. B. Chicago Communications, a longstanding partner of the village related to public safety communications, holds the State of Illinois contract for the radios. The purchases include thirty-seven portable radios, two mobile radios, and associated hardware, software, and setup. It is now ready for your consideration.
All right. Any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by trustee Garner, second by trustee, oh, I'm sorry. I missed you.
Thorsonson.
Oh, I know that, but you have a comment?
No, I said second.
Oh, second. Oh, sorry. I thought it was trustee O'Brien, so. Trustee Thorsonson, yes. That's second. Roll call, please.
Tortinson.
Yes.
Woodside.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Garner.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baumz.
Aye.
Six Aye.
Motion carries. My apologies, Ms. Thorsonson. All right, on to the part that we've all been waiting for, right? What do we have to do all this business for when the most important thing is at the end, right? So this is public comment. Just a couple comments about public comment tonight. In the past, and we, we don't have an ordinance that addresses this, but due to the large number of people that talk during public comment on issues like this, we'd ask that you consider limiting your comments to three minutes. And again, that's approximately three minutes, recognizing that there's many of your other fellow neighbors and other folks that would like to come and talk to us, and not that what each of you have to say is important, it's just that as the night wears on, you can imagine we all wear on. So just to kind of give an opportunity for everybody to be heard fresh, then that's the idea behind that. But like I said, well, I remind you that you're over three minutes, not so closely, but as, as you go on, maybe I might make, give you a little sign to consider wrapping it up. So that's number one. Number two, there's been a couple issues with regard, and that doesn't mean that tonight, everybody's here for pads, but I'm guessing that's the majority of you here tonight. So that with reference to pads, there's been a couple issues with conflicts indicated, and I won't speak for trustee Woodside other than to say that I know that I've seen him say that he is not intending on voting on this matter when it does come before the Village Board, which isn't until, likely until later in August. And then with, for me personally, my son co-owns a property management company that specializes in part in not profits for which he works with or has, actually, hasn't worked with pads yet, but potentially would work with them. And I want to, as well as for trustee Woodside, want to avoid any appearance of impropriety in any way, so that there isn't some thought that it was approved because of our connections to the particular entities involved. So for myself, I can say that I will not vote either, though the only vote I would ever have would be in the event of a tie. Trustees are the ones that ultimately will vote on the issue to decide whether or not there's a text amendment made, and whether or not pads is allowed to locate at the current Fairbridge location. And last, it's just with reference to neighbors, I just would remind you that we're all neighbors, that I appreciate how you've been, I think I've been quoted as passionate, so maybe that's, I'll continue to use that word, passionate, and I recognize that's, for neighbors, that's how you feel, and there's also passionate people that are for it. So just recognizing that, again, we're going to have the same rules, or try to have the same rules tonight, where no applause, for or against. Sometimes that can be intimidating. My point would be is I want to give everybody the opportunity to share their thoughts without fear of reprisal, that whatever they share, if it's good or, you know, for or against, I don't want them to feel like they can't say it, and that, no matter who you are. So if I start from the front and say that, then if I were to tell someone, don't clap for that person, and then you say, well, you're for, you're against, I don't want to have that impression made because that's not our purpose. Again, the village's purpose in this is, is that a petition's brought to us by pads. It's not something that we asked for, but it's something that we do for any business that would come to us. We would then tell them the rules that they'd have to follow in order to. the rules that they'd have to follow in order to successfully be located where they're asking to go, and then staff would work with them, which they have in this case. And then they go through the hearing process, where the public is given an opportunity to share their opinions, like you are tonight. And generally, it's, you guys are way out in front of it, because it hasn't even hit our agenda for planning and zoning or for the village board, but you guys have been here and been diligent in doing that, and sharing your opinions. So, I give you credit for that, to be aware of what's going on, and for what's happening in your neighborhood. So, from that perspective, then, again, just to tell you the dates, so before we get there, is that the only date that's currently on the schedule is July twenty-fourth, is the Planning and Zoning Board meeting, which is scheduled for seven-thirty here, and that is where the petitioner will make a presentation with regards to pads, and then there would be people from either side, for or against, would be allowed to testify before the Planning and Zoning Board. They may or may not, that night, take a vote, usually they will, and then they are a recommending body, which means that they don't decide ultimately what the issue is, but they make a recommendation to us, which is important to the village board, in terms of what they think and how they evaluate the matter. And then after they've made their recommendation, then it comes to us as a village board, and there isn't a date set for that, because we don't know when their particular meeting or hearing will end. So it likely will be towards the end of August, but we'll know more once the planning and zoning meeting has happened, and they've made a recommendation. So it's not that we don't want to tell you what that date is, it's that we're going to do our very best to communicate what the dates are, so you can be part of this. I can tell you that, I couldn't think of anything more that I'd want with regard to this, is that you would feel fully informed, that you would feel that everything is up front. There isn't anything to hide from our perspective. We're not pads, and we're a conduit by which businesses throughout the Village of Gurnee obtain the ability to be able to locate here. So, we want to do our best to offer each side the opportunity to share why they think it is either a bad idea or a good idea, in essence. So tonight, if you would like to step up to the microphone, and you could state your name, and then we'll listen to you, and then before you do that, we can ask the folks from Destino's, "Do you really want to stay here for the next hour or two?" Are you sure? I'm giving your way out, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right. Now we got the neighbors, right? Here we go, so...
My name is Bill Hamm. I live at thirty-four thirty-three Crescent Avenue. It's about this homeless shelter. I think it's baloney. The city hasn't maintained that building for years. It's a slop hole, and there's bums walking around all the time. I see them on my street. Last week, two people walking down the street with luggage and stuff, they threw it down a neighbor's driveway, and they're arguing, and they walked off, and then they come back, and one, another guy, his wife got up in the morning and opened up the drapes to their bedroom, and there's a bum laying there, sleeping outside their bedroom window, and he goes out, he's eighty-three, to tell them, "You gotta go, I'm calling the cops." He goes, "Well, I'll go, don't call the police", and off he went, and he's got his pants hanging down. So do you want your wife to get up in the morning and see that kind of junk? I don't think it should be, there's too many parks there, like, we got neighbors with kids and everything, that are there playing in front of the houses all the time, and we got enough people walking by there. And right now, I went by there on the way here, there's bums sitting out there shooting the baloney, and people pandering on the corner for change. And that goes on all the time in the city, which is ridiculous. They should pick them up, take them somewhere. If they need mental help, take them for mental help. If they, if they're doing something illegal, arrest them and throw them in jail. Don't let them back out on the street ten minutes later. So I'm against this. I think it's bad for our community, and bad for everybody in our neighborhood, and I don't want to see it. We got seniors that live there, and they got a senior place right across the street. You got these homeless people, and some of them are felons, and it seems like nobody cares that they're felons. And they go, "Oh, well, there's not going to be any sex offenders there. We've already checked for that." Well, I see how people check, they're checking the IDs of all the people coming into this country, too. So, I'm against it, and I want to voice my opinion. And if they do do this, I think that they should get into petition together and remove everybody that's here from their office for not taking care of the people that live here, and that pay the taxes here, which mine went up fourteen-hundred dollars this year. So I'm not happy with anything that's going on, and that's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Please state your name.
Karen Roswodowski. I live at fourteen thirty-two Bell Plain, directly kitty-corner across from Shaw Park. And I've raised three children, and now have grandchildren. My son actually bought a house two blocks from me on Magnolia, and my daughter lives a mile away, my granddaughter, and it's made me afraid, because I see, like, the cops at the park with people who are doing whatever they're doing in the back in the park where the woods are, and, you know, they come out, and it's just, it's scary. And living here and raising my family for so long was, the only thing out here was Great America and Welton's County Market, you know, and the west side was not even here. I mean, even Crescent Meadows in my neighborhood wasn't there, sorry. And we adapted through all those changes. Everything has been good. We have a great neighborhood. We have great neighbors who all are here for one reason, and that is for our safety, because I don't feel safe. I get up at night and make sure I have the doors locked and that the garage is closed, and, you know, I just installed more cameras, and I shouldn't be having to do that. And this has been going on for a while, which I didn't even know that pads had already had people in there, which explains a lot. And it's just scary, because after ninety days, where are they going to go? In our neighborhood. And what are they going to do? Who knows? And I'm just, I'm afraid. And I think that this is not a good fit for where it is. I think there are other locations that may be, you know, a little bit better than where they are proposed. So, thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name.
My name is Jessica Elbers. I'm here tonight, again, to let you know that I oppose this pads operation coming into our neighborhood. I personally was robbed less than ten days ago, and the Gurnee Police Department is pretty positive. It is from one of the current homeless people residing at that residence already, because it was only a couple hundred yards away. There are children in this audience right now that I have driven. There's one there, there's one there, and they live in that neighborhood. And I would never, ever want them exposed to the trash that is already occurring. When I went looking around for my personal items that were stolen from me, four different people sleeping on the roadway with their head on the curb outside of the current Fairbridge. I was just looking for my items to see if maybe they had been tossed. It's already uncontrolled. There's no way adding ninety of them is going to control any, anything. If you want to get rid of residents, that's a great way to do it. You'll hear from somebody behind me, who's student I drive, who lives far away from there. They wouldn't want it in their neighborhood. The opportunity was there just two years ago. There was a vacant hotel facility next door to her kids. There's not a chance that it would have happened. I am not opposed to pads or what they do, but it does not belong right near all these young children, near these daycares, near these schools, and near these well-rooted businesses such as the Gurnee Garden Center. It does not belong in that area. Pick somewhere else. Pick the hotel out on the corner of forty-five and one-twenty, where there are no houses adjacent. I shouldn't have to worry about people hustling across the street, dragging their bags, when I'm trying to get off of a side street onto Grand Avenue. I shouldn't have to worry about them banging on my window while I'm stopped at an extra-long light because the Gurnee Police Department or Fire Department flips the light and it changes. But they come up, and they won't leave your car alone. So unless you guys all go and sit in those intersections on a day-to-day basis for extended periods of time, and actually open your eyes, go grab a cup of coffee at the McDonald's. You'll be hit up for money, if you even dare get out of your car there, but that, I mean, the areas, they already keep their doors locked. The businesses have their doors locked. Customers have to show that they're a paying customer to be able to get inside. Their bathrooms are locked. You have to have a code to get inside to use the bathroom. This gentleman wants to go to the Starbucks on the corner of Grand and Green Bay. He needs a code to get into the bathroom. Why? Because of the vagrant overdosing bums that are already outside on their front porch. Please, do not approve this. There are people in this audience that might agree that it's a great place for it, but they don't live there. They don't live next door. They don't live within the surrounding area. They don't drive there every single day. They don't allow their children to walk up to... Brian, how many blocks did you have to walk with the bus?
Ma'am, ma'am, ma'am.
That's what I'm saying.
No, no, no. You talk this way, do not talk this way.
You can't, but that's what I'm saying. These children have to walk blocks. It's dark when we pick them up in the morning. It's dark if they take a late bus home. I would never let anyone's child, not even my grown adult children, walk in that area. That's all I want to leave you with.
Okay, thank you. Please state your name, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Randy Ness, and I live at thirty-four twenty-two Grandmore, in the Crescent Meadows area. And I live there with my two daughters, who actually made it on the Gurnee Facebook page with our neighbors and our friends. So these are the exact kids, and you can check the Gurnee Facebook page, the block party picture. These are the exact kids that are going to be affected by this, right here. And I've also been teaching in the Gurnee District fifty-six schools for over twenty years. I'm really invested in the community. I just want to say that I agree that something does need to be done. I agree that we have problems with providing for people who are homeless. I just don't think that this is the right, it's not the right solution. It's not the right spot. There's too many kids. I also live with my elderly father. He's late seventies. He lives in the area. There's too many kids and elderly people there. It's just not good. And everything else I have to say is a reiteration of what has been said, but I want to thank you so much for the time and the ear.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ben Squires, and I live at ten-nine-eight Fuller Road, adjacent to Bethel Lutheran Church, which is where I've served as pastor, been resident, and serving there for fourteen years now. And I'm here to encourage you to support the pads proposal for a fixed site shelter location at the Fairbridge Inn. This is our shared Lake County. Homelessness is our shared concern, and we will share in finding solutions. The churches of Lake County have supported pads for thirty years with the church site model, which was meant to be a stop-gap measure, I believe, until a fixed site shelter location could be identified, but it never has been, and so people would move every night, which is just really difficult on mental health and the ability actually to get into stable housing. The churches have staffed those evenings and supported those experiencing homelessness, those who are working with the program for pads. They've staffed them with volunteers, often many elderly volunteers, and very few safety concerns over the, really the course of thirty years. The fixed site shelter location does not mean the end of church support. The churches will continue to provide many vital parts of serving people at the sites, including bringing meals, and we are part of a church network that seeks to be engaged with pads and our communities to serve those in need, and to see those in need as fully human beings, and those that need dignity and respect, including a dear friend of mine who had been part of pads, eventually got housing, and died last year, but I would want him to be spoken well of, even when he was going through difficulties. I just want to let you know that you've received a packet of letters from churches that are supporting this, and I want to read those names into the record, just so that they are heard aloud. This is twenty-five, this is twenty-five churches. After the full ministry, Waukegan, Bethel Lutheran Gurnee, Christian Neighbors Waukegan, Crosslife Libertyville, First Baptist Waukegan, Gurnee Community Church, Holy Cross Lutheran Libertyville, Hope Lutheran Long Grove, House of Prayer Gurnee, Journey Church Beach Park, Joy Lutheran Gurnee, Lakeland Gurnee, Life Church Gurnee, Living Waters Winthrop Harbor, Lord of Glory Gray's Lake, Love Inc. of Lake County, New Abbey Waukegan, Redeemer Lutheran Waukegan, St. Paul's Lutheran Waukegan, Sign of the Dove Waukegan, Street Chaplains, Trinity AME Waukegan, Lavinia Gurnee, Waukegan Baptist Bible, and Wesley Free Methodist Waukegan, along with two other religious communities, Islamic Foundation North in Libertyville, and Prairie Circle Unitarian Universal Congregation in Gray's Lake. This is our shared Lake County. Those churches are saying, "We are in this together for this Gurnee site." Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name.
My name is Candy Reimholz, and I have lived, worked, and volunteered in the Gurnee and Waukegan area for forty-two years. I am the admin of the Gurnee Moms Facebook group, the communications lead for the Gurnee Area Moms Demand Action Group, was part of the SWTHS campaign. I'm on the Warren Foundation Board, a friend of Safe Illinois, and I work for one of our local school districts. All of my efforts, both professionally and as a volunteer, are with one goal in mind, to make Gurnee the best place to live and raise a family. With that said, I fully support pads Lake County, and I encourage the Gurnee Planning and Zoning Board and the Gurnee Village Board to approve the pads-proposed fixed site shelter. Tonight, I am not going to focus on the growing need for a shelter in our village. I am not going to talk about how these are our neighbors and should be treated with compassion, because I would hope that we could all agree on at least those things. Tonight, I'm going to use my time to talk about why I think this project is a win for the neighborhood surrounding the Fairbridge Inn. You see, when I first heard about this project, I got so excited, because in my naivete, I thought the neighborhood would be like, "Yes, thank you, a solution to all of these problems that everyone keeps mentioning." I was genuinely surprised at the resistance. I clearly, excuse me, I clearly haven't found the right way to communicate my sincerity and my belief that this will be a boon to the neighborhood, so I'll try again. First of all, this is a seven-million-dollar investment into that neighborhood. This will be the largest development project in that area, with the exception of the Senior Living Center. That is huge. Currently, the hotel is an eyesore, a safety hazard, a drain on community resources, and a danger in the neighborhood. The moment that the ownership changes and work begins on the new shelter, everyone that is currently staying at that hotel and loitering around the area will have to find a new place to go. The property will be completely cleaned, renovated, and improved. Instead of having a rundown hotel with a parking lot full of loiters, you'll have a beautiful property with landscaping, privacy fences, and twenty-four-hour security. Instead of people coming and going all the time, there are going to be strict regulations in place. If a resident's brother wants to come visit and drop off cookies from grandma, it is not allowed, let alone friends or other unhoused individuals. Instead of having a hotel full of god knows what, you will have residents that are accounted for at all times and need to follow rules, like no drugs and alcohol. The rooms will be checked multiple times a day, and residents who don't follow the rules will not be allowed to stay. And instead of an absentee owner, you now have pads who is committed to being a good neighbor. You have a problem with something happening on that corner? Now you have someone to call and talk to. Regardless of what many people think, the stats show that homeless people are no more likely to commit crime than housed individuals. People just think that, because that is the homelessness that they see. We've become very good in our society at hiding the homeless. Most homelessness looks like a mom with a car full of her belongings in the Walmart parking lot, or a nineteen-year-old kid crashing on his friend's couches, or the divorced dad that lost his job and can't find a place in his zip code that he can afford. Bottom line, if we want less homelessness in our area, we need to get better at two things. Helping people not become homeless in the first place, and help them get back on their feet after they become homeless. Pads does both of those things. Cleaning up this corner will make people comfortable to head back over in that area. Businesses will be more likely to invest in that area without the Fairbridge and bringing down the whole block. This will bring down crime in the area and beautify a part of Gurnee that could really use some love. I grew up in East Gurnee. My grandparents lived in that house on Ellis Avenue. Then my family lived there, then my sister lived there, then my cousin lived there, and now his brother lives there. My aunt used to watch me at her house on Waveland. Five generations of my family have shopped at the Gurnee Garden Center. We used to ride in the back of our pickup to Welton's for groceries, and we cursed the construction at forty-one and Grand for four decades, just like everybody else in this room. I am not unaware of the history of this neighborhood. I am not an outsider. I say this because I care about that neighborhood. I care about the people, and I really do think this is the best option right now to turn this area around. I think this is a win-win-win. A win for the neighborhood, a win for Gurnee, and a win for the most vulnerable members of our society. And I'd like for you guys to know that you do have a lot of support of people that aren't in this room. I have in this over fifty other letters of support from other residents and other local leaders. They've all been emailed to you, so you've had a chance to view them, but I just want to make sure that... But I just want to make sure that people watching at home know that there are a lot of supporters out there. Thank you.
Thank you. We've been delivered those to each one of us, so thank you, Candy. Appreciate that.
Hi, my name, my name is Nari Powers. I recently graduated from Warren Township High School, and I'm here to say that I am against the PADS being put by. I stay on Bell Plain around the corner from the PADS that's being discussed about PADS housing being a residence. I have stated before, I'll be leaving for college soon off athletic basketball scholarship, but I am in fear for my parents and my 13-year-old niece that's currently going to Viking. The generation we are already in is crazy with the things that's going in the world, but I feel like putting PADS closer to people that stay by PADS would be just crazy. Growing up, my mom had a hair salon on 5050 Grand, and PADS is already placed on Grand, and I've encountered and seen so much crazy things growing up. Late nights, different people laid out, people knocking on my mother's salon door, threatening her for money to use the bathroom, to use the phone, and et cetera, et cetera. I was 14 and couldn't even walk to Dunkin' Donuts with my siblings or Chuck Wagon to get food because of the fear of my parents had of PADS. They used to walk around naked, yelling down the street, begging for food, and fighting each other. Things that's already going on now around the neighborhood that I stay in without PADS even being put, placed there. PADS was never in control and, in my opinion, won't ever be in control. I've encountered so much growing up around PADS, and I have fear it's going to be worse in the generation we are already in. I have stated before, at last week's meeting, I have a basketball rim outside my house on Bell Plain, and people have came on my property saying inappropriate things to me. I would quickly, quickly run into the house and get my dad. I can't even shoot at night anymore. I used to take my dog on walks with my niece in May and June. Recently, now I don't anymore. We would go to Speedway to get Slurpees, and many times it would be people begging in front of Speedway, asking for money, saying inappropriate things to me or my niece. I have fear for my niece, her having to grow up around this. If PADS does get approved, walking to the bus stop every morning early, even when it's dark. I used to have to walk to the bus stop, and my bus stop was blocks, two blocks away from Bell Plain, which I stay on, and I used to have to walk. Sometimes my dad would even take me to the bus stop in fear of just, you know, it being dark in the, in the morning. She also has to walk home every day after school. I also have fear for the elderly in the homes that ride their buggies, that I see just down the street riding their buggies to Speedway, riding their buggies to Dollar General. I just feel like the neighborhood doesn't feel safe anymore. I grew up on Bell, I grew up on Bell Plain. We moved in that house when I was a freshman in high school, and we stayed on Grandville. I've stayed on Grandville when I was from kindergarten through eighth grade. So I've just been around the neighborhood, and I've grown up. I used to play outside with my cousins that stayed across from the street, and I just feel like the neighborhood is not safe anymore. I can't even go outside. We don't even let my niece go outside. We just take her to Launch, or I'll take her to Six Flags if she wants to, you know, do something fun with her friends because she doesn't, no one feels safe in the neighborhood. And I'm just here to say that I hope you guys don't approve PADS because of the children that stay in the neighborhood and all the young adults that's my age and younger that's in the neighborhood and, you know, everyone else that's in the neighborhood that's getting robbed or is, and being harassed. And also, when me and my mom would come home at night, we would also have to call my dad to come open the door at night because we just don't feel safe. So I hope you guys don't approve PADS off the money fact. I hope you guys don't approve it and are generous about people's safety and around the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name.
Hi, I'm Candy Stone. Um, Lord Jesus, my Father. You know, I'm gonna try to make this short, and it's kind of hard. We go on and on about how we don't want PADS in our neighborhood. I've shared with everybody all the stories, even if you go on YouTube. I tell people exactly the things that go on with PADS because I'm, I'm very familiar. They say one thing, they do another. To tell you just a little bit, Tom Hood is one of the nicest people you could ever know. At this point with PADS, a lot of people, I know you all question, well, should he be mayor again? My daughter was missing at the age of seven years old, first grade, in Waukegan where Tom resided. A Lake County sheriff asked me to reach out to Tom Hood because maybe he could help me. Tom Hood did help me with the fact of, he said, "What happened to your daughter?" I said, "Well, she was in class. The teacher told everybody to line up to walk home." And my daughter raised her hand and said, "Well, I catch the bus." She said, "Walk anyway." This is my daughter's first time, first grade was her first time in school. She went to a private lady, well, she went to private school for kindergarten. Tom talked to me. He helped me out. He told me what to do, but to no avail. I couldn't get the help I needed because of the Waukegan public school system. Nobody will fight against it. But at that time, he made me feel comfortable. And I hope at this time, he will find it and is hard to have comfort with us. I currently stopped doing hair on Grand Avenue because of all the riffraff, the people, the clothes that are out there. I called my, I called my, my real estate agent, which actually the house I bought on Bell Plain, she was, she was for the seller, and I asked her if she could please help me. Her name is Renee O'Brien from Keller &amp; Williams. She's over in the corner. I have recently talked about, talked to her about relocating and actually leaving Bell Plain. A lot of us can't leave Bell Plain because a lot of people have purchased homes there, and they have to stay there for five years before selling, come to find out. A lot of other people have taken loans on their homes. They just don't feel like they'll get what they need. And with these people coming into our neighborhoods, I've, the property of our value is going to decrease so large that we won't be able to get anything back. And for those who borrowed, they won't be able to do anything. They'll have to stay there. Tom, I recently went into a building where I found out you had an office. And I'm like, "Oh, Tom's here." They said, "Yes, so I only need a small space. Is this the building he's in?" They said, "Yes, he's here." And I looked at the building, and I go, "Well, you know, his son owns the building." I said, "Well, you know, that's kind of awesome. His son owns all three buildings." And the first thing I thought was, "Gosh." If PADS offered them $2 million for that building, I wonder how much money they could have given to his son for them to go out on Riverside Drive? To me, Riverside Drive would be perfect. You have all the rooms. You have all the land around it where you guys could add on to it. Build kitchens, build an auditorium for people to move. They don't have to come into our community. We're all kind of tired about the stealing that's going on, the people laid up in our yards, the people getting in our yards. It's a lot of mental health things going on with those people, and they need help. And if they could offer Gurnee $2 million, why not offer your son $10 million, $15 million? I'm gonna call the generational wealth, kind of like LeBron and his son, they're kind of keeping it around. Why not? Why not? They could have offered him that money. He could have extended his buildings, made more money. And I'm not just trying to be funny or being cruel. All I'm saying is it's, it's a place that's not truly really close to a neighborhood. And yeah, you have businesses over there, but they're going to give those immigrants $3,000 a month. We can't even get help for that. And if we have to be bothered with these people, how about a tax, a, a tax decrease for the community? Why not knock $3,000, $4,000, $5,000 off of people's taxes? Why not? We have to be bothered with this, no one else. And like you said, we're passionate. We're passionate about our neighborhood. We're passionate about where we live. And I'm not going to take all day to talk about it, but, you know, my whole thing is, and I hate to use this term, please don't let PADS do you like this. Don't let PADS pimp you. They have the money. Their pockets are deep. Their pockets are very deep. They could easily buy the place where your son has Riverside Drive, pay each tenant $3,000 to $5,000 to move out. There's plenty of space in Gurnee for everybody in all those buildings that are moving. Again, we have Renee over here. If, if anybody needs to talk to her about a place to stay, or if, if anybody wants to relocate, she's at Keller &amp; Williams Shorewest, should be more than happy to help you all out. Because at this point, our community is getting really bad. I don't know where it's going to get any better, and right now, we're the only people who care. As far as I'm concerned, this is almost a waste of time, but the one thing he said, "We're like family. We have each other. We're listening. We're here listening to each other." And I mean, I hope you find it in your heart to figure out something else because this isn't it. And there's going to be people getting hurt. And when I brought up the stuff about, and I'm going to try to keep it short, when I brought up about Round Lake and the crystal meth-
You're right up against that, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. When you have, hold on. When you have all this drugs and stuff going on, it's going to invite a certain entity into our neighborhood. And like I said, one affects one of us, affects all of us. And it won't even just be us out, out here over in the east. It's going to gravitate to the west. And you're putting the police officers and hibernant jeopardy. I like the officers that like to ride around and wave. You got the few that don't, but they seem to be really friendly. You know, I see you guys cleaned up the area a little bit, but it's going to be right back to where it was. They still have over at Speedway sheets and stuff underneath the hedges, so you can't see them sleeping under there. Yeah, they're out front, from, from out front for now, but like I said, they're all, like the lady said, they're all out in the street. They're panhandling, they're knocking on windows. They're still doing it. They're at Jewel at night. Come on, Tom. Have a heart. And I love you to death, and I appreciate you for helping me. And he doesn't know me from a can of paint, but I would often call him and say, "Hey, you got a minute? I need to ask you a question." I was told you were the best guy from, between him and the Josh Gens, I have bugged them to death. "Hey, I need you. Can you just tell me one thing for one hot minute, please?" You know? And, and you were great, and I appreciate that. And I want to see you be mayor again because people are having conflicting views, and I just feel like-
I'm sure they are. I'm sure they are.
Yeah, 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 but I'm-
You need to wrap it up, though, because there's a lot of people behind you.
I'm done. I'm done, I'm done.
Appreciate your comment.
Again, everybody, and I don't know all these people who I'm talking to because nobody introduced themselves. I really wish you would be passionate about our community because we are. And again, if anybody has any questions about maybe selling their house, Renee O'Brien will be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name. Are you, oh, I thought maybe you're interpreting because of the way, no.
My name is Brian Rivas. I go to Warren. I'm going to be a senior next year, but I grew up, I grew up in Waukegan, and I moved here about like five years ago. And I just wanted to say that, like, I'm not against nothing that's going to help like homeless people and stuff because these are the most vulnerable people of our community, and they do need help. But what I am against is that, I've had, I've had experiences with like people, because normally this neighborhood is supposed to be considered a safe neighborhood, but sometimes like, because the homeless people go to Jewel and stuff like that, they look there to try to rob people, prostitution, a bunch of bad stuff that in a community of a bunch of kids, it shouldn't be around. And for the record, a lot of people consider Gurnee a good neighborhood and that, for some reason, that we're like better than like places like Waukegan, Zion, or North Chicago, but at the end of the day, with all these people coming here and causing all that, we're no better than any of them for you guys to approve that. So I would say I'm against it, and there's probably better solutions that you guys could find for the homeless people.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is-
Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Lisbeth Rivas. That's my son right there that just spoke. And he's right, we moved about five years here out of Waukegan because I wanted something better for my kids. And we found a great neighborhood with great neighbors. And the one thing that I love, I have two little ones in addition to my son, who's going to be a senior, and an older one, is that I want a better neighborhood for them than where I came from. We live in a cul-de-sac, which is phenomenal, and kids come out. But when we have PADS, if we have PADS there, all the, like, as it is, there's already people coming in and out that shouldn't be there. We call the cops. They run to Waukegan. So then the Gurnee cops can do nothing because they went to Waukegan. So unless Waukegan, the Waukegan cops in Gurnee do something to help mitigate that issue that already is present, you guys, that, wherever you guys want to do PADS is not going to work. Because they're going to run to Waukegan, they're not going to be able to do something, then it's going to be back and forth. And I'm a Christian, and I love Jesus, and I know that I'm all for helping PADS, but the pastor that sat here, all these churches, I would love to see a PADS in Long Grove. Because if they are all for helping, why don't go to a community that is elite, that has the resources, that has the money? Waukegan is a, is a medium, like, community where average people want better for their kids. Building a PADS is not going to help. There's already one on Grand Avenue, a couple miles down. We don't need another one on Grand Avenue a couple miles west of where already a PADS is in Waukegan. And I'm sorry, Tom, but it is, your, by your son already purchasing that, it is a conflict of interest. And if you do vote for it, if there is a tie, it's all going to look bad on you. So it doesn't matter what anyone says. As a mayor, you shouldn't have any vote, whether there's a tie or not. Because if you vote for your son, everybody's going to say, "Oh, it's because it's his son." And if you vote against, you're going to have conflicts within your family. So-
So just, I'll-
I'm just, I'm just stating the fact.
I won't interrupt. I'll interrupt you for this purpose, is that, so my son doesn't own the building, never has owned the building. He was, he's in the building, he's in the process of, or he's a property manager, which means that he would manage property. So in this case, he's not going to manage this particular property, and for that reason, I'm not voting. So just to clarify, clarify, he's not buying or selling it.
Okay, then I got, I was misinformed.
Okay.
But regardless, there's still some type of conflict of interest there, and I appreciate, I appreciate you not voting unless, but you did mention if there is a tie that you would vote.
No, no, I didn't, I didn't say that. If there is a tie, I wouldn't vote then either. I mean, that's the only time that I would be able to vote in a normal circumstance.
Okay.
All right.
Well, anyway, I have, as a mom of two little kids, one who's three, one who's six, I don't want to see PADS. I beg and I implore, no, please don't build it there. We already are dealing with enough. And if you guys do open it, I would love to see a decrease in taxes for all of us because you guys just increased it. So if you guys are going to depreciate our value by building a PADS, give us back some of that money, so at least we can say, hey, at least we got a tax break. So just food for thought. If you guys are going to go through with this, then give something back to us that we're already paying enough for our kids to go to decent schools, and this is just going to depreciate our value. As a Hispanic mom, I can tell you that I see a lot of homelessness in my community. And I don't want to see it, but it irritates me when they just have handouts, "Give me here, give me there," and they don't work for it. So I'm telling you, like, like, I'm, I'm speaking, maybe the Hispanic community might not like me for saying this, but they need to work, and I just have handouts. I'm a working citizen. My husband's a business owner. We pay our due taxes, and we want better for our kids, but Waukegan, now we're going to have to move, we moved out of Waukegan, now we're going to have to move out of Gurnee if you guys do this. So what are we going to do? Just cop, like, cities till we find a good neighborhood? That's not, that's not the, the way to go about it. It's addressing what we have, and I really do appreciate all this turnout that is here, people that, like you said, are passionate.
Yeah, they are. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello.
Please state your name.
Cindy Horvath.
Cindy Horvath, my name's Cindy Horvath. Um, I just had a couple of, um, points that I, uh, wanted to make for, I, I just felt like, uh, Waukegan's nearby, Waukegan's a nice town, but it has a higher crime rate. So, um, and that's, I'm not saying that's anybody's fault, it's just the way it is. And, um, I just, it feels to me, because it's like a mile from my house, or a mile and a half at the most, that you're bringing, bringing that closer. I mean, I, I accidentally went down that street a couple weeks ago, and I, maybe the people, is that still a hotel, I'm not sure, but there were people that were sitting out there, and smoking, and, you know, you can just tell that they were just hanging, hanging out, which is okay, but it's just made me a little uncomfortable. The other thing is, when I was in Waukegan, um, I, I used to drive for Uber and Lyft. When I went there, they, and I don't know, maybe they do, this happens in some towns, but they would, I would get, um, notes, like, on my, on my phone, where if you stay here, we'll, we'll up it up to, you know, six dollars, or this much more. You know, oh, if you stay or go, go to this address in Waukegan, we'll give you more. And I just thought, oh, good, there's probably not a lot of cars. But I have a feeling it might partly be because of the, um, the crime rate. I, I, you know, I didn't do a study or anything, but, I mean, I lived in Wheeling for thirty years, and I just remember hearing about it then. Um, so, I just feel, we, we've been here fourteen years, like, it came from Wheeling, and, um, I love it here, and, uh, you know, and, and I'm not completely clear on how this gets voted in, if it's just you guys, I have to look into that. If just the trustees vote, but, um, if that's the case, and you guys are listening, I'm not against it. I too am a Christian, it's wrong not to help people, to me. But if we could just put it somewhere, you know, uh, that's not gonna be around a lot of people's home, anybody's home, in the east or west. Uh, that's just, I was just thinking, if we could look for that, that would be a good idea. That's all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Carlson, please state your name.
Good evening, my name is Steve Carlson, I live at 36235 North Mill Court, Incorporated, Grandwood Park, Gurnee, Illinois. Uh, and I'm gonna get off script here for a second, I haven't done this in a while, so bear with me. It seems to me, nobody will belittle or disregard the concerns in this neighborhood, but I would suggest to you the very way to address the concerns in this neighborhood is to build this facility, because it gets people off the street. Now, let me get out of my script and see if I can do it without checking. Um, I served on the Lake County Board for eighteen years. I had the honor, the high honor of my life to represent this community on, in Lake County. I was Chair of Health and Community Services Committee for fourteen of those years. During those fourteen years, we handled healthcare, we handled recidivism, we tried to handle, uh, affordable housing, a variety of issues, with federal and state money that came through Lake County. The one intractable problem we could never really address was homelessness. Pads and others have tried with inadequate facilities and inadequate funding for many years to address it. Finally, here's a solution for it. Not in total, but it will address the concerns in the county as well as this neighborhood. Now, I've never had the chance, really, and I wanna take it now, to thank this, this board for its support over many issues over many years. I know a little bit about the history. Uh, when we had video gambling, the fight against video gambling, which we lost eventually, but you guys stood tall. There's no video gambling in, in Gurnee, and Gurnee's better for it. When we had Smoke Free Lake County, to try and keep people from stinking of cigarettes and inhaling carcinogens in taverns, you guys stood, stood tall. When we had Tobacco Twenty-One, to try and keep cigarettes out of the hands of kids, you guys stood, excuse me, sir, you guys stood tall. Uh, the last one that I had anything to do with, which is near and dear to my heart, is Two One One, when we needed funding from municipalities, so that I could go to my peers on the Lake County Board and say, this is the right thing to do. You guys, you guys were there, you backed me up, and you made it stronger, and we made it happen. Last but not least, Gurnee has led the way in the nine-one-one consolidation. All of these are against political opposition, it takes courage to do that. I guess I'm, I'm in a position where I understand what you're going through, but Gurnee's always been a leader in Lake County by example, even at the risk of political pressure. And I'm asking you to keep that great tradition alive by approving this worthwhile project. And I thank you for your service.
Thank you. Well, ma'am, please state your name.
My name is Arjuna Powers, and I was the little girl my mom was talking about, that was lost in Waukegan. I do not agree with a lot of the stuff that a lot of people talk about. I don't think a lot of the stuff that you do is good. So, here, I do have disabilities. I have seizures, so I'm kinda angry here, and I'm kinda upset. So, my niece, I, she can't even go to the bus stop by herself. My, my father, he has to go his cane to the bus stop. I can't go with her, because I have seizures. And if I try to go, who's, who's gonna help me? Who's gonna know if I go out? Who, who's gonna know? And if she goes out by herself, who's gonna know? And if some weirdo comes along, who's gonna save us?
What, what's she saying, sir?
Ma'am, ma'am, just, if you'd let her just speak, that, she's doing great, she's doing awesome, why don't you just let her talk?
And what I don't like about you, really-
No, that's not fair.
I know, and you were, overall, before, and it's hurting-
Everything that you read is-
I know, I know. In the past, I know.
I know.
All the way.
You know what? She's just upset. Because she, she does well, we had to pull her out of two colleges, she does well now, and she wanted to come up here, she wanted to speak.
All right, ma'am, I, I just would really, just rather have her speak as best she can, so-
Yes.
Go ahead.
And we wanna hear what you have to say, so let's go ahead and just complete your thoughts.
But still, all this that's going on in Gurnee, and I have to go to UIC now, and I have to be worried about not only my sister, if she does have to come back home, and my niece, if she does have to stay in Gurnee, this shouldn't have to be going on. And I just would be worried about my mom, and also my dad, and like, my neighbors, who also be, have to worry about their kids, who I am fondly cared for, and I also gave them my games too, because they're basically like kids, like, they're like my nephews, and like, like, my god nephew, like, I'm like, it's just, it's hurtful to see kids be surrounded by this. I don't want them to be surrounded where I was surrounded by, to see what I had to see growing up, 'cause I had to see stuff like this, growing up. It's just, I don't want to see this happening again, when I saw Waukegan. And it's like, it happened all over again, and I have to come here. I didn't want to come to this stage, I didn't wanna have to come here at all. And you're just sitting up here, lying to these people, just saying, mhm, mhm, mhm. You're not doing anything. You're not doing anything, you're not fixing the road, you're not doing anything for these people. You're not helping the speedways, these kids are almost getting hit.
Thank you, I, I appreciate the courage it took for you to come up and speak, so thank you for that. Please state your name.
Joseph Gibbs, I live at thirty-four seventy Ellis Avenue, which is just a few blocks from the proposed pads shelter. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and I appreciate hearing from my neighbors who both are for and against shelter. Um, I've lived here for eighteen years, prior to that, I grew up in Waukegan. I have read both the pads proposal and the material spread by those opposed to the proposed pads shelter. After considering both, I am in support of the shelter, and encouraging you, as our village governance, to approve the proposed pads fix shelters, uh, site shelter. The primary reason I support the shelter, from which the other reasons flow, is that I do strive to follow Jesus, and I would never judge the sincerity or content of somebody else's faith by whether they, uh, support or oppose the shelter. Uh, but my understanding of what Jesus meant when he said, "Love your neighbors as yourselves, and whatever you do for the least of these, you do for me." Lead me to see the homeless, who are our neighbors, and certainly among the least of these, as deserving of our special attention and consideration, uh, and even of our love, uh, helping those who don't have the benefits we have, by giving them a roof over their head and some resources to help them to rise out of homelessness. I also happen to be a family physician, and one of the places I work is the Erie Clinic on Grand Avenue in Waukegan, less than two miles from where the proposed shelter is. As such, I have many patients who are either on the edge of homelessness, or are homeless themselves. They come from all walks of life, they have a variety of medical conditions, but they're mostly people like us, people who haven't been handed the advantages that you and I have, and trying to do the best they can with what they've got. I am concerned about how our unsheltered neighbors are sometimes portrayed and misrepresented. In different circumstances that are beyond our control, I could be the one on the street. These are fellow humans, made in the image of God, like you and I, and as such, they deserve our support and compassion, and that includes supporting any opportunity for providing them with a roof, a bed, and some opportunities. I also work at the Erie Clinic, Clinic in Evanston-Skokie, which serves a similar population as the clinic here. I take the train down, and my walk to the clinic takes me right past the Margarita Inn. It's an Evanston Hotel, recently turned into a homeless shelter. It's a beautiful building, it's in a very nice neighborhood, much nicer than ours. I honestly didn't know it was a homeless shelter, until some of my colleagues mentioned it to me. However, I've worked with many patients that have benefited from the amazing work that Connections for the Homeless, this is the entity that runs the Margarita Inn, it's kind of the, the pads, uh, Evanston's version of pads, but the remarkable work they've done through the years, providing shelter and opportunities to leave homelessness. In my recent letter to the board, I provided a link to, uh, an article from last month, reporting on the actual impact that the shelter has had on that neighborhood. Uh, and, uh, there's a quote from one neighborhood person who had previously opposed the shelter in that article, says, quote, "You know what? Maybe it's not such a bad thing after all, it's kind of quiet," end quote. There's ample evidence in the medical literature that homelessness contributes to increased illness, mortality, and higher medical costs, costs that you and I help to pay, and that giving people shelter helps reduce those costs. In fact, for those very reasons, the University of Illinois Hospital Emergency Department in Chicago now helps to provide housing for their homeless patients, and especially the ones that make multiple visits to the emergency room, with excellent results. And in that letter, there is a link to an article from HOD about that, uh, that initiative. In the past, I've worked at the pads shelter in a church that I previously attended. I helped set up rooms, serve these dear people food, and clean up afterwards. I've experienced the good that pads does for our neighbors. I've seen that they're an organization with integrity and idealism, they're not just there to make a buck. And as such, I support what they want to do in my neighborhood. I believe in what pads and other organizations are trying to do in our unjust society, in which housing prices have become obscene, and I believe we should promote and support and encourage the work that they're doing. I respectfully ask that you would do the same, to do the right thing by our neighbors by approving the proposed pads fix site shelter location at thirty-seven forty Grand Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name, sir.
Hi, my name's Jimmy Cicero, I'm at thirty-seven forty Johns Manville, it's like six or seven blocks from where it is. Uh, for years, we've been told, don't judge, I'm against it, all right? For years, we've been told, don't judge the homeless, don't dehumanize them, don't assume that they are bad people, and it's true, we should have compassion for our all people, we shouldn't dehumanize them. But we should recognize that for the most part, not in every case, but in most cases, these are mostly people who have given their life to drugs, their main priority in life, one of the only things they wanna do is drugs, and that's why they're homeless, because they'd rather do drugs than have a home. And now, and now they are inflicting their lifestyle on everyone around here. Uh, yeah, I feel like they wouldn't dream of putting that pads shelter anywhere near the mall, or on the western, nicer side of Gurnee, near, they're trying to push it over here on the east side of Gurnee, which I feel, living over there, that we're a little bit more of the neglected part of town, compared to over by the mall and stuff, so, yep, I'm against it.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, I, what I'd like-
I know I was up here to only take a quick minute.
No, no, I, if you could, I wanna wait to get everybody else an opportunity, and if afterwards we have time, you can do seconds, but I want everybody to get a chance to say their part, okay?
Okay, I have, I have surgery on my foot, I can't stand for a long period of time, so-
All right, okay, I, I get that, but I'd rather just see people get their first shot.
Good, uh, good evening, everyone, um-
Please state your name, sir.
My name's Terry Galvin. And going back to what the physician just said, you know, a lot of us are a few paychecks away from being homeless. That being said, I don't really agree with putting this homeless shelter here, because I already have problems in my neighborhood. And I, I'm disabled, I take my dog out in the middle of the night, and I don't wanna run into someone, and then we have an issue that's bigger than the homeless shelter, if somebody's going to jail, somebody's going someplace else. It's a dangerous thing to have these people in the neighborhood. They're all over the place, they're walking through my driveway, they're walking through my yard, I put up a fence, it's just unacceptable. And I call the police, and the police out here in Gurnee are neutered. They don't do anything, and it takes them forty-five minutes to show up, and then they say, well, I didn't see it, so I really don't know. I had him ride a motorcycle through my backyard, and he said, well, he didn't see it. I said, I saw it, I'll sign the complaint. It's just, it's unacceptable. And if you really wanna lose this town, keep up this BS, and we'll all move. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, please state your name.
Good evening, my name is Nicole Lee, I am part of the East, um, Gurnee community, I've been there about ten years now, thirty-four ninety-six Meadow Crest Circle. Just wanted to share quickly that I, I am in opposition of the pads as a fixed shelter, I'm at the Fair Bridge Motel. Um, there's just, a lot of things have come with, come with that territory that everyone has spoken about, um, security concerns, safety concerns. Our daughter wakes up in the middle of the night and hears yelling between people, two people in front of our house. Um, you know, when we're letting our dog out, laid out at night, um, you know, to go to the bathroom, we have to peek around the corner, make sure that, you know, there aren't any, there isn't anyone in the bushes, there's just a security concern. Um, you know, our community is pretty tight-knit, we've got a ton of families, um, you know, businesses, um, just really hardworking folks that really want to just have a safe neighborhood, um, as well. So I just ask that you just consider, um, if the, the pads fixed shelter was in your community, in your home, a few, a few doors down from where you live, and you had to, you know, peek around the corner, take extra precaution when you open your garage door, or pay attention who's walking by, 'cause you see people are looking inside of your garage, you know, how would you feel? How would you feel if you had to, to, uh, make sure that your grandchildren, or your nieces, or your nephews, you know, um, had to take extra precautions riding their bike down the street? Just think about that, just think about how you would feel if, if the, the shelter was a few doors down from your home. Similar to others, we are not opposed to helping those who are vulnerable, um, you know, I'm a big, big advocate for that, but the Fair Bridge Motel is just not the place, there are plenty other, uh, resources and, and locations in Gurnee that could be a better fit. Uh, we just really wanna protect, um, our community and our children, and continue to keep it safe, so I really ask that you just consider that. Would you want that in your backyard? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mark Frosseth. As a Gurnee resident, and longtime strong supporter of pads, I ask you to vote yes in support of the pads proposal for a fixed site shelter at the Fair Bridge Inn location. In Lake County and Gurnee, we have a humanitarian problem that needs your help. Lake County has experienced a fifty percent increase in homelessness over one year, a seventy-five percent increase in homelessness among families, and a three hundred and ten percent increase in children in pads shelter. Pads now has over five hundred Lake County neighbors and hotel shelters across the county. At the same time, rent prices are rising, and we've seen food prices rise by twenty-five percent, the largest increase in forty years. According to Two One One Annual Report, fifty percent of the calls to Two One One are in regards to housing, and Gurnee is one of the top four communities calling Two One One. My Christian values tell me to love my neighbor as myself. My heart and head tell me to do what I can to help pads clients to regain permanent housing. Past solutions are not sustainable, churches are no longer able to provide the support needed as shelters, temporary hotel shelters will not have financial support soon. Without a solution, those experiencing homelessness, and those in temporary hotel shelters, will end up living on the streets in Gurnee and across Lake County. We need a new solution, that solution is the pads fixed site shelters with co-located services. I had the opportunity to tour two fixed site shelters, one in Evanston, and one in Downers Grove. They appear to be everything that pads of Lake County suggests, including short-term benefits of a safe place to sleep and care for themselves, an environment that allows them to work the program towards getting back on their feet, and a long-term eighty percent housing success rate. I understand that there are fears about locating the fixed site shelter near businesses and residential property. I have heard the pads clients characterized as alcoholics, drug addicts, panhandlers, and criminals. Actually, a pads client is more, no more likely to be any of those than a house person. These fears have not been realized in the two current fixed site shelters I toured. In fact, pads has only utilized the Fair Bridge for the past five months, and currently only occupies ten, approximately ten rooms. I volunteered with the pads community for over fifteen years. Through those years, I've been blessed to call many pads clients friends. I would characterize those becoming pads clients as victims of domestic abuse, financially strained due to job loss or poor planning, mentally ill or physically challenged without mental, without medical support, and divorcees without a place to live. Many of them are scared, depressed, and just looking for a way back to their own housing. In partnership with pads, starting in twenty fifteen, my wife Rose and I led a privately funded campaign to support those experiencing long-term homelessness called Housing- to support those experiencing long-term homelessness called Housing First, Ten to End. During the past nine years, we've raised over four hundred thousand dollars with the support of five hundred and fifty people and organizations who believe in PADS and helping the homeless. Those resources have been used to temporarily house ten very hard-to-house individuals. With the help of PADS supportive services, all of them are now permanently housed without the need for our private funding. I ask you, as a leader of my community, to show your leadership in Gurnee and in the rest of the county by approving the fixed-site shelter. I realize it takes political and personal courage to step up to a challenge like this, but I believe that you will find yourself on the right side of history. Thanks for your support.
Thank you. Please state your name, ma'am.
My name is Rachel Thiem. My family has lived at ten forty-six Waveland since nineteen seventy-eight. I grew up in this home, and now I raise my three children, ages seventeen, thirteen, and eleven, here. We live two blocks away from the proposed PADS low-barrier homeless shelter. I recognize the comment that the gentleman before me said that PADS has been housing homeless in ten rooms. I have a personal account of changes to the neighborhood in recent months. Since PADS has been housing homeless at the Fair Bridge, our family has personally witnessed an increase in people loitering outside the Fair Bridge in the parking lot and around the area at all hours of the day and night. Just driving here last week to the zoning board meeting here at the Village Hall, we witnessed a group of six people drinking in the Gurnee Garden Center parking lot, a group of two individuals sitting on the curb of the Fair Bridge parking lot, and another three people talking just outside the lobby of the Fair Bridge. All these individuals were adult men. I've traveled all across the United States because I travel two times a month and stay in all different hotels. And I've never had to walk into a hotel where there, there were that many people outside the hotel loitering. We used to let our children walk down Waveland to Grand to go to Viking Park, to play or to walk to school or walk to the Speedway on Grand. With the increase of adult men loitering outside the Fair Bridge, we no longer allow our two girls, age eleven and thirteen, and our son, age seventeen, to walk to either, to walk to Viking. We no longer allow them to walk as a group to Speedway with their neighborhood friends because we don't feel it's safe. This has caused a loss of revenue for Speedway due to PADS placing homeless at Fair Bridge already. After personally witnessing a significant increase of police presence and a significant increase of adult males loitering in the parking lots and around the neighborhood, we can see that the area is no longer safe. Granting the PADS low-barrier shelter would endanger the safety and welfare of the residents around this location. Our family has personally witnessed an increase in food garbage, empty and broken beer bottles and cans, drug paraphernalia around the parking lot and on the sidewalks on Grand and Waveland since PADS has housed homeless at the Fair Bridge. This litter is unsafe material, and this drug paraphernalia endangers the public health. In the last forty-five years, my parents and now myself, I have had to call the police, I've never had to call the police because of a disturbance in my neighborhood. In the last three months, I had to call the non-emergency number two times. Just last month, I had to call the police non-emergency number to report an adult male angrily yelling and flailing, flailing his arms around and pacing from the garage of the Fair Bridge to the corner of Waveland and Grand, and then back to the garage. My seventeen-year-old son uses the bus stop on the corner of Grand and Waveland to go to work at Great America. I will no longer allow him to use that bus stop to travel anywhere. Instead, I pay for an Uber. PADS using the Fair Bridge has already caused a loss in business for the area because I no longer use the public transportation for my family. This location is adjacent to a residential area with many daycares, parks, and children used, that the children in the neighborhood used to walk to. Particularly, the block I live in on Waveland, there are two daycares. And two, and we are less than two blocks from this proposed homeless shelter. Many of the children and elderly no longer walk around. The granting of the Low Barrier Shelter for this area is not compatible with the residential community filled with children and elderly. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Mandy Jo Skinner. I've been a resident of Lake County since two thousand and three. I've witnessed homelessness in every town. It's an issue that's not going away and demands a countywide response. We can no longer operate in isolation and must take a collaborative approach. The fixed-site shelter development is a necessary and obvious response to our growing homeless challenge. Homelessness is not a moral failure, does not mean less. The homeless are people, people like you and I. For the most part, not drug addicts and not weirdos. They have hopes and dreams and plans for themselves. They've fallen on hard times, but this doesn't have to be a permanent solution situation. The proposed fixed shelter in Gurnee represents a solution to homelessness. Unlike sheltering the homeless from church to church, a fixed-site shelter can provide basic necessities but also support systems, healthcare, mental health counseling, job training, and addiction treatment. By offering these services under one umbrella, the Gurnee Shelter can help individuals address the root causes of their homelessness and work toward long-term stability. Homelessness, again, does not have to be a permanent situation. A fixed-site shelter actually reduces the burden on emergency services, hospitals, and law enforcement by providing a structured environment where individuals can receive care and support. This proactive approach leads to lower costs for Gurnee and will improve overall health outcomes. By helping homeless individuals regain stability, shelters enable them to participate more fully in the economy. Stable housing and support services help people become self-sufficient, which also contrib, contributes positively to the economy. Gurnee is a prime location for new business. You have the best schools, the best restaurants, a hub for manufacturing. A fixed-site location does not detract from that desirable location but enhances its appeal. Commitment to community, businesses want to see that. They can see that you are working towards solving the homeless crisis. In the twenty-first century, a business that wants to invest in your community wants to see you're invested in it first. A fixed-site shelter in Gurnee will get people off the street and on the right path to independent living, employment, and putting money into the economy. I ask that you vote to approve the PADS proposed fixed-site shelter location. It does take political courage. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Dave McClellan.
You beat me to it.
I live at eighty-eight, eleven eighty-eight Boulevard View Avenue. In nineteen seventy-six, my father, my father built a house for us, and thirty-six fifty-six Glen Flora. I lived there for eighteen years until I went away to college. In two thousand and twelve, I was able to bring my family back to eleven eighty-eight Boulevard View Avenue. When I was a kid, we rode our bikes to the Speedway, which was Checker at the time. We rode our bikes right down Grand Avenue all the way to Viking Park, to Gurnee Grade School, to the Old Gunglers. I used to buy model toys at the Ace Hardware. All that in that neighborhood. It's something we don't let our son do now. And to everybody that says that these are just people just like you and I, my wife has been woken up in the middle of the night, three to four different times, by a couple of people that are screaming and yelling. This is in the summer with the air conditioning on and the windows shut. She is woken out, woken up out of asleep to them yelling and screaming at each other. They would lay down in our neighbor's yard, smoke cigarettes. The last time she called the police, took about fifteen, twenty minutes for them to show up, had a quick conversation with them, and drove away. She called back and was able to get through to the officer that spoke with them. And the officer said, I quote, "They live in a homeless shelter in the area." Okay, they're, they're there, whatever's going on, but how often are you, normal people, waking up, normal people on this in the middle of the night because you're screaming in a neighborhood that's not yours? Just walking down the street at two-thirty in the morning screaming at, I'm assuming it's their spouse, maybe not, I don't know. But that's not normal, and that's happening right now. And the cop was on a first-name basis with them. They knew them. They've dealt with them before. So this isn't just normal people doing normal things. See, some, some of them are, some of them aren't, I don't know. But that is happening in my neighborhood right now, and it's not the neighborhood I grew up in. And I'm not happy about it. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Just have a few materials to, to state them.
Good evening. I'm Joy Stuckish, and I live on Bell Plain Avenue. I'm a spokesperson for the community members opposed to the Fair Bridge Inn as a location for a fixed-site shelter. So that everyone attending tonight's meeting, even if they choose not to make a statement, in order for them to be accounted for, I'd like to ask anyone here opposed to the Fair Bridge Inn as a homeless shelter location to please raise their hand or stand up.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mayor Hood, you asked for new information, so we're bringing that tonight. I'll start with a little background. PADS is proposing an adult low-barrier fixed-site shelter that will house ninety individuals in thirty rooms. Sobriety is not required, drug testing is not performed, the only past felony excluded is sex offender status, and there will be two emergency overnight drop-offs permitted per night. The homeless occupants will be from all across Lake County. PADS will not ensure that they have a valid driver's license or are safe to operate a vehicle if they have a vehicle. And these are vehicles that will be driving in my residential neighborhood. There will only be a warming station, they'll have to rely on food brought in by volunteers, and the shelter will have only two to three staff members overnight for ninety homeless individuals with specialized needs. To be clear, and I think you've heard this already from the people here, we are not opposed to a homeless shelter that serves this population. I think everyone deserves a second chance and a hand up. What we are opposing is this type of shelter at this location. For anyone here who is not familiar with the area, and I provided a zoning map with some key properties pointed out for you all to reference. The Fair Bridge property is the entrance to a residential neighborhood that is home to six in-home daycares, two of which are on Waveland Avenue fifteen hundred feet from the shelter site. Spalding Elementary School is one mile from the site. And the neighborhood is, as you heard, filled with school bus stops. There are three children's parks within walking distance, and there's a senior living facility across the street. This type of shelter will endanger the safety and welfare of this vulnerable community. PADS has put out some very questionable statistics, some of which we've included in our list of questions to PADS. PADS has stated that fixed-site shelters have an eighty percent success rate in transitioning occupants to permanent housing. But no sources are cited. We don't know how or where this data was collected. But we can compare this statistic to a similar fixed-site shelter that you've heard mentioned already by a few people in Evanston, the Margarita Inn. This shelter is also a hotel turned into a shelter, and it houses up to sixty-five individuals in forty rooms. The Evanston Fixed-Site Shelter reported for their first quarter of two thousand and twenty-four of the twelve households that left the shelter, two households transitioned to a higher level of care, including inpatient substance use treatment, and moving to a nursing home. One household exited into homeless after declining multiple housing options. One household left the shelter without sharing where they are going. Alarmingly, only eight of the twelve households moved into stable housing matches. This is a sixty-six percent success rate compared to PADS' claim of eighty percent. But for argument's sake, let's say there's an eighty percent success rate. For ninety occupants with a ninety-day average length of stay, this is seventy-two homeless adults per year that will remain homeless when they leave Fair Bridge. We want to know what happens with the individuals that do not move to permanent housing and are now in this area after leaving Fair Bridge. PADS wants us to believe that turning the Fair Bridge Inn into a permanent shelter will improve the conditions at this problematic building. But we know this to be untrue. PADS has already been sheltering the homeless at Fair Bridge through the pandemic. It has not been for five months. It's been much longer than that. And in the time, the conditions of the property and surrounding properties have worsened, and the crime has increased. Keith Owens shared statistics from his Gurnee Police Department FOIA request at the last Village Board meeting, and this report shows that for the thirty-four months following COVID lockdown, and this reflects after PADS started placing residents at Fair Bridge, reportable offenses at the Fair Bridge Inn increased by fifty-three percent. And this does not even include, include offenses within walking distance of the Fair Bridge Inn, only those on the Fair Bridge property. PADS has asked us to look at two other fixed-site shelters as examples of how the Gurnee Shelter will impact our area, the DuPage PADS Interim Housing Center and the Margarita Inn in Evanston. So we did. Both of these fixed-site shelters were hotels, which were used to house the homeless through the pandemic and were eventually converted into fixed-site shelters. So, these fixed-site shelters, which PADS is using as its own blueprint, what impact have they had on the surrounding area? For the Evanston Shelter, there are two active lawsuits against the Margarita Inn. One is from an owner of a nearby apartment building citing, quote, "loss of tenants, loss of income, and overall loss of value," quote, for his building caused by the shelter. The other lawsuit is from the owner of a nearby glass museum, which is now permanently closed except for private tours due to the damage caused by the nearby shelter's occupants. The lawsuit states in the two-year period of March first, two thousand and twenty to March first, two thousand and twenty-two, there were two hundred and sixty police or fire department calls related to the shelter. This lawsuit states the shelter, quote, "deters business activity, reduces the quality of life, and diminishes property values in the surrounding neighborhood." Our FOIA request to the Evanston Police Department could not be completed because of the, quote, "extraordinary volume of over three thousand one hundred calls to the police for the four-block area around the Margarita Inn in the seven months, December first, two thousand and twenty-three to July, to July, two thousand and twenty-four, following connections for the homeless officially making this a fixed-site shelter." Three thousand one hundred police calls in seven months. That's more than an average of fourteen calls per day. I've also included a graph from the EvanstonRoundtable.com. It's at the back of the packets, the last page. It's a full, full-size picture. It illustrates the increase in police calls to the Margarita Inn after they began to house the homeless there. In two thousand and nineteen, before the Emergency Shelter Act, there were eleven police calls. In two thousand and twenty, after connections for the homeless began sheltering the homeless at the hotel, there were one hundred and fifty-seven police calls. That is a fourteen-hundred percent increase. In two thousand and twenty-one, there were two hundred and thirty-six police calls. This is a twenty-one-hundred percent increase from two thousand and nineteen. And this is a shelter that only houses sixty-five people. That's twenty-eight percent fewer occupants than PADS at Fair Bridge. For the DuPage Shelter, our FOIA request to the DuPage Police Department could not be completed for the DuPage PADS Interim Housing Center because our request for police reports and nine-one-one calls for the shelter property for April first, two thousand and twenty-two to July first, two thousand and twenty-four, this timeframe begins two days after PADS officially acquired the hotel, was, quote, "on duly burdensome with seven hundred and thirty-two documents." Our second FOIA request to the DuPage Police Department also could not be completed because our request for police reports and nine-one-one calls to the shelter property from December first, two thousand and twenty-three to July first, two thousand and twenty-four, a seven-month timeframe, was, quote, "on duly burdensome with one hundred and ninety-six calls for police and emergency service." That's one hundred and ninety-six nine-one-one calls to the DuPage PADS Shelter in seven months. So this is the impact that we can expect if the Fair Bridge Inn becomes a fixed-site shelter. Imagine the strain that this will put on the Gurnee Police Department, not to mention the impact- to mention the impact on the neighborhood's safety. PADS cannot enforce what their occupants do off the property. PADS has said the shelter occupants won't loiter in the neighborhood or nearby commercial properties, but I'm sorry, this is a free country, and they have as much right to go where they please as the rest of us. We already know the impact on our area from PADS sheltering the homeless at Fairbridge. I have had the privilege of speaking with owners, managers, and employees of many of the East Grand Avenue businesses, some of whom are here tonight, and they have each shared their own stories on how they have been impacted by the increase of homelessness the Fairbridge Inn has brought to the area. I'm going to share just a couple of them. JR Muffler and Auto Repair's manager and the owner's son stated that homeless individuals break into and damage the cars they keep there overnight for repair. A manager at Woods Heritage Senior Living Facility stated their doors are open late, and homeless individuals will come in to use the bathrooms and loiter in and on the property. The manager of Elegancia Boutique stated she's losing business because they have to keep their doors locked during business hours. A property owner of commercial lots near the former Rees store building stated he has lost $1 million because he can't rent the back building, as every time the property is shown, there is homeless activity happening on the property. A manager of Advanced Auto Parts stated homeless individuals will come into the store to use the bathrooms and have stolen merchandise on their way out. A CarFect car sales lot manager stated homeless individuals broke into the back entrance recently. They can no longer get their landscapers to clean the back of their property because of all the needles back there.
I know you're representing a group of people, but you're well over your three minutes, and you've got a whole group of your neighbors wanting to talk.
I ask for leniency because I am representing a group of people.
But there's a whole group of them behind you wanting to talk, so, all right?
When I went to the Dollar Tree on Saturday, there was a sign that said they were closed until further notice. The staff at Advanced Auto Parts and Beck's Furniture told me the building was temporarily closed because a water line had broken after homeless individuals who had been congregating on the property had been stuffing garbage into the sewer drains. A repairman pulled out copious amounts of garbage that had all been stuffed down into the system and caused the line to burst, resulting in water gushing out of the building. PADS of Lake County has never independently constructed and managed a fixed-site shelter before. The only other fixed-site shelter in Lake County is managed by a Safe Place in Zion for Survivors of Domestic Violence with 33 beds. On June 17th, PADS got official approval to turn the Travelodge on Lewis Avenue in Waukegan into a low-barrier family shelter. This shelter is five miles from Fairbridge. This family shelter and the proposed adult shelter at Fairbridge will be the only two major fixed-site shelters in all of Lake County. Our area will become the central hub for the unhoused for all of Lake County. Why would we choose to saturate one area with the homeless from an entire county and place the strain on resources that come with serving this population all on one community? We should instead cast a wide net and distribute the responsibility more evenly across Lake County to avoid overextending one area's resources. I'm going to end by saying this. I truly believe in the value of preventing homelessness and serving the homeless with dignity. When I first learned about the PADS plans for shelter, I didn't know what to think, so I went to the meetings, I asked questions, and I listened. Since then, our team has spent countless hours researching public documents and articles, conferring with community members and government representatives and more, and with all the information and the facts we've uncovered, I am certain that this shelter will have a hugely negative impact on the safety and welfare of this community, and not just in the East Gurnee community. The effects will be widespread, they're not going to stop at the imaginary border of the Route 41 overpass. My home is less than half a mile from Fairbridge. When we bought our home in 2008, we looked at homes on the west side of Gurnee, but we chose to live in this neighborhood because we loved the area. There's lots of green space, close to the schools, parks, and the community is diverse, which is something that's important to me and my husband for raising children. Since PADS has been sheltering the homeless at Fairbridge for the last several years, there's been a huge change in the area. My eight-year-old son goes to Spalding Elementary School, one mile from the site. He gets on the school bus just across the street from our house. My four-year-old daughter attends an in-home daycare 1,500 feet from the shelter. I walk my children down the sidewalks of Bell Plain to Leesai Quendo three times a week. We go to Shaw and Christine Thompson Park regularly. My family has had personal experience with things happening recently on and near our property, including police spotlights shining in our windows at 3:00 a.m., homeless people setting up camp in my son's fort in our backyard and outside my daughter's window. Even last week, my husband was on our driveway at 9:00 p.m. when a homeless individual walked down the sidewalk with a grocery cart full of items and tried to sell my husband a grill. You heard on the June 17th meeting, and again today, a school bus driver talking about how she can't even drive her normal bus route because of the dangerous occurrences at Fairbridge. This neighborhood is not a safe location for an adult-only, low-barrier homeless shelter. Housing the homeless is a righteous cause, but it does not need to be done at the expense of our children's safety. There are other locations that are more suitable to house the homeless with dignity and locations that will not endanger the welfare and safety of our vulnerable community. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name.
Hi, my name is Becky Kuzinas. I also have a document. Hi, my name is Becky Kuzinas. Thank you for your service, Trustee Quinn, Trustee Thorstensen, Trustee Ross, Mayor Hood, Trustee Garner, Trustee Balms, and Trustee Woodside. I do appreciate each person's heart in this room. Jory has provided some details of how PADS sheltering the unhoused at Fairbridge has negatively impacted the safety and welfare of the community. But the Village Board is already aware, we believe, of the problems this has been causing. We believe this because of the ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 6 of the Gurnee Municipal Code to regulate and license hotels, which was put into effect November 29th, 2022, and then most recently updated in 2024. I didn't make copies, as I believe the Board is already aware of the ordinance amendment, since the Board members voted unanimously for it. The ordinance was put into effect in response to problems caused by sheltering homeless in hotels in Gurnee, we believe. It defines nuisance hotels as a hotel that either has three or more nuisance violations within a 180-day period, or has five or more nuisance innocent violations, nuisance incident violations within any one-year period. There's a whole list of what nuisance innocence incidents are, and based on Gurnee police reports, it appears that the Fairbridge Inn may have violated this ordinance. The ordinance also states that loitering is prohibited. No person shall loiter in or upon any hotel or outside any hotel structures or parking lots. For penalties and remedies, the ordinance states that if there is a nuisance innocent violation, a hearing officer or circuit court may impose fines, order mandatory initiation of security measures, including enhanced lighting, surveillance cameras, fences or barriers to entry, and the hiring of security personnel. And finally, the ordinance describes the allowance of emergency closure. It states, "If the licensing administrator determines that nuisance innocent incident violations that have occurred at the hotel presents an immediate threat to public safety or welfare, they may order the immediate and summary closure of the hotel." The existence of this ordinance shows several things. The Village Board is aware of problems that sheltering the unhoused at Gurnee Hotels has caused, and they created this ordinance in response to this. The Village has the ability to order the hotel to implement security measures, including enhanced lighting, surveillance cameras, fences or barriers to entry, and the hiring of security personnel. The Village has the ability to implement emergency closure of the Fairbridge Inn if the number of occurrences correct for the nuisance incident violations. And if the Fairbridge Inn unfortunately becomes a fixed-site shelter, this ordinance will no longer apply, and then the Village will not have the ability to implement the requirements and penalties. The question remains, since PADS has stated they have been working on a fixed-site shelter for a long time, and they contracted to buy Fairbridge in February 2024, why have they not exerted any influence or pressure to improve conditions and security for the unhoused that are already sheltering there? PADS has shown an alarming lack of stewardship and accountability in this situation. There are some very questionable details in the PADS' plans to purchase the Fairbridge Inn. Power Construction provided the signed construction budget to PADS on June 1st, 2023, according to a dated document. Four months after PADS got this construction budget approval, V Capital LLC, a real estate investor, purchased the Fairbridge Inn for $1.1 million in October 2023, and that document has been passed to you. V Capital LLC then contracted to sell Fairbridge to PADS for $2 million four months later in February 2024. If PADS was already actively planning to buy and renovate Fairbridge, why did they wait until after a real estate investor purchased the property, then contracted with that investor to pay nearly double the purchase price four months later using taxpayer dollars? All of this raises some very serious concerns and begs the question, why? Where is that $900,000 going instead of to a more spacious location that would allow more privacy for each adult couple or single adult to have their own room, for example? We want to ensure that the unhoused are sheltered at a property that is safe and suitable, both for the occupants and the surrounding community. And on a personal note, I am afraid for my safety and my young children's safety. My spouse gets no notice when he travels. When the company says he has to go, he has to go, and I am left with my young children. And I have had my mailbox hit by what the police described as a DUI driver. I have been hit by a DUI driver on 41 and Grand. I have had shopping carts in my yard, just to name a few things that have happened personally, as I know each of you from previous good government projects that we've worked on. And the first in my family was able to ride the CLC, the bus to CLC and the bus to Chicago, the bus that goes by our house. We thought we would buy near public transit in a diverse area to teach our children responsibility with public transit. And, by the way, our firstborn is a girl, and now our son can't ride that same bus safely, and for that matter, neither can our daughter. When our daughter was younger, we walked to Viking Park, and now we don't even feel safe walking from Bell Plain to Christine Thompson Park. We have lived there since 2008. Our family does our best to be a part of the solution, and I am willing to volunteer to help find a solution, but this is not what's best for the unhoused or the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lori Isaacson. In addition to the Fairbridge Shelter risking the safety and welfare of the community, the Fairbridge Inn property is not safe or suitable for the homeless individuals who would be living there. Myself, Jory, and Becky have conferred with the Commissioner of the Lake County Housing Commission, someone with personal experience in providing supportive housing to the homeless, and she explained the following reasons why the Fairbridge Inn is unsuitable for this shelter. First, the Grand Avenue four-lane highway on which Fairbridge is located creates hazardous conditions for shelter occupants, a largely mobile population that is often traveling on foot. PADS will house 90 people in 30 rooms, as previously stated. Also, the building itself is inadequate to house this number of people and provide the necessary services that this population needs and deserves. The Lake County Commissioner referred to this plan as, quote, "shoebox," end quote. PADS will not even be able to provide a kitchen for residents with a 90-day average length of stay. There will only be a warming station, and they rely on food brought in by volunteers. There will also be inadequate staffing for the number of occupants, eight to 10 staff members during the day, two to three staff members overnight for 90 residents, again, all adults, many with specialized needs. Conflict of interests have been uncovered in this case. Trustee Woodside, with all due respect, is a PADS president. Mayor Hood's son is an owner of the property management company Riverside Management that has been stated to be contracted by PADS to manage the Fairbridge Shelter. This evening, we have heard additional comments on that. Perhaps these conflicts of interest have facilitated into the decision for choosing this property as a shelter site rather than this property actually being a suitable location. Along with my members of the community, care about finding better solutions for housing and homeless, and through our research, we have identified an alternative site that would allow Lake County to house the homeless with dignity. The property we are proposing is a government-owned property of empty townhomes surrounded by fencing to prevent hazardous conditions from the roadway. Since it is government-owned, we believe that the $2 million that would otherwise go to purchasing the Fairbridge Inn can instead go straight into renovation costs and services to the homeless. This property will allow for residents to have individual rooms and, most importantly, a kitchen versus three people to a room at Fairbridge. As I've passed out the leaflet, the addresses of the properties are 1862, 1865, 1869, 1870, 1872, 1873, 1874, and 1876, located on Trepid Street in Great Lakes. We have provided you with a printed map of the location. The property is in North Chicago area, which is listed as one of the five cities with the highest rates of homelessness. The properties have access to the Pace Bus Stop, Route 563, which goes to downtown Waukegan on weekdays. The bus route also goes to the nearby Roseland Franklin University Health Clinic and James Lowell Veterans Hospital, so homeless occupants have convenient access to medical care, which is vital. We would like PADS to consider this as an alternative housing option that will better serve the homeless they are sheltering and maximize the taxpayer dollars for this project. However, the question remains, what do we do with the current Fairbridge Inn property? Allowing it to continue as, quote, "as is" will continue to endanger the public safety and welfare. The fact that PADS has been operating out of Fairbridge through the pandemic is largely responsible for this. The pandemic government fund that is allowing PADS to shelter the homeless at the hotel is, I believe, ending soon. And as I previously stated, the current owner of the Fairbridge Inn, a real estate investor who purchased the property in October 2023 for $1.1 million and contracted with PADS to sell the property four months later for $2 million. If PADS is not able to convert the hotel to a shelter and this real estate contract falls through, we believe the current owner will be motivated to sell. V Capital LLC is not someone interested in running a rundown old hotel. They purchased the property in order to sell it for a profit. This leaves the door open, many possibilities for what can be done with this property. Our other options for what to do with the hotel include utilize Gurnee's ordinance amending Chapter 22, Article 6 of the Gurnee Municipal Code to regulate and license hotels, as Jory spoke about this earlier, and implement an emergency closure. The Village could rezone the property using the LaSalle Sinclair factors, or the Village could condemn and acquire the property via eminent domain. Once the Fairbridge property is no longer operating as a hotel, there are many options for what can be done with this property. The Village's zoning ordinance states, quote, "The East Grand Gateway Overlay District is intended to provide opportunities for new development, redevelopment, and renovation of buildings in a manner that creates a, quote-unquote, 'gateway' and sense of arrival into the Village from the east and reinforces the economic viability and character of the area. Development within the overlay district would include amenities to encourage pedestrian activity, improve pedestrian safety, and enhance the corridor's aesthetics," end quote. The 2020 Gurnee Comprehensive Plan states, quote, "Small independent businesses are best positioned to thrive when they are within walking distance to local residents. Areas with smaller and more affordable commercial units that are nearby..." Areas with smaller and more affordable commercial units that are nearby residential neighborhoods, such as the East Grand Avenue Gateway, should be targeted for new small businesses," end quote. We reached out to the community and received dozens of great ideas for alternative uses for this property. Ideas include a quick-service restaurant with green space, an entertainment place for kids and families to gather, similar to the city museum or art cafe, an indoor farmer's market, a tool library, a bookstore and cafe, a pay-to-play indoor play pace for children, and the fiscal year 2024-25 Economic Development Department initiatives may be utilized to help facilitate a new development at this property. Any of these ideas would contribute to the revitalization and economic development of the struggling East Grand Gateway area and give our small businesses in our neighborhood a chance to thrive. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Could you please state your name?
Hi, my name is Dwayne Caldwell. I live at 3447 Grand Moore, not too far from where it would be. I want to address some of the comments made by the pastor and the physician, who spoke of wanting to employ their Christian values to support this. I personally am against it. The first pastor read off a list of about 25 churches who he said were in support, one of which I am a member of, I attend regularly. So imagine my surprise here in that church when I'm there pretty much every Sunday. We do drives, missionary drives, we do all kinds of stuff from many places. I haven't heard one word about my church supporting PADS. So just, you know, churches aren't monolithic, they're filled with individuals. I don't think you can just say, "This church supports this program." As for the eloquent physician, he spoke very nicely of his Christian values and his desire to support others, which is all very admirable. I want to point out, there's more than one way to help. Jesus also said, "I am sending you out like sheep among wolves, therefore be as shrewd as snakes and as innocent as doves." I think many times, some people look at things trying to be innocent as doves when they really need to be shrewd as snakes. Wise as snakes? We've heard testimony after testimony after testimony of people who are afraid, who've been assaulted, who have been hurt, who no longer can live their lives as they used to because of the environment that's already there, and now we're talking about making it much larger, much bigger, being a central hub for the entire county in this one little space? Is that wise or shrewd? I would suggest to the board that it's neither wise nor shrewd. It is not the right location, it's not the right place. I too would like to solve the problem, that's not it. I would suggest it be some other solution, be placed somewhere else, not there. It's just simply not a good idea.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Who's talking?
Hey, I'm Andy Thiem.
Please state your name.
Andy Thiem, I live at 1046 Wayland, about two blocks down from the Fairbridge.
A bit closer to the microphone, just to hear what you have to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, lift it up.
There we go. I spoke to you guys last board meeting, so I'm not going to rehash what I said earlier. I'm just going to restate that I'm against the homeless shelter. I think it's a great idea, but I just think it's just not a fit for the community. And I think all you guys in your hearts know that it's not for our neighborhood. But also, when I was at the zoning board meeting, you know, there's an economic impact here, too, that we can't ignore, and taking that commercial zone away from this community is, I think, is the wrong idea. I think we need to bring a business in there that's going to thrive and that we can all support and enjoy. So that's all I really got to say. A lot of people tell about how unsafe it is for the kids, and so I brought my kid with me here, and she's going to say a few things that she wants to say. This is Zoe.
Hi, my name is Zoe, I'm 13 years old and currently going to eighth grade. I live two blocks down from the Fairbridge on Wade Land. I've lived there for 13 years, of my whole life I've been alive. Every summer, me and my friends have always liked to walk to the gas station that's very close by, within walking distance. Every time I walk there, I always try to avoid the Fairbridge. On my way home from school, we'd always drive there, and I've seen police there like every week. My friend's mom owns a daycare that is two houses down from mine, which is also two blocks away from the Fairbridge. My bus stop is also two blocks away. There are young children living within walking distance. Every summer, I've been scared to walk or even pass by that street from all the sketchy stuff that with my own eyes I've seen just by driving past home from school. I want to feel safe while walking with my neighborhood, with my friends and siblings. I fear that there are going to be, that at the homeless shelter, that could cause more danger to the neighborhood. Schools are within miles, daycares are within a few blocks. The safety for me, my friends, and neighbors, and my family could be more at risk. According to AmericanAdidasCenter.org, 38% of homeless people abuse drugs, abuse alcohol, while 26% abuse other drugs. If that is true, we could have homeless people going there that could be drunk and not themselves. Thirdmill.com states about 43% of sexual assault involves using alcohol by the victim. 69 involves using alcohol by the predator. If not, if 69% involves using alcohol by the predator and there are homeless people that abuse alcohol, how can I feel safe just within walking distance if I know a homeless person could be either on alcohol, drinking alcohol, and could not be themselves? I would feel scared, and I wouldn't want to walk there. I don't feel like we should build this just because of the community that lives within walking distances and has personal experience with the Fairbridge. I support the idea of putting a homeless shelter, just not in this community where there are young children, families, stores. It's just not a safe place to do it.
Thank you, Zoe, for the courage it took for you to stand up and say that. So thanks.
Hello, my name is Carrie Wagner. I've been to most of these meetings, and we've all heard the heart-wrenching stories. I mean, some of the people aren't here tonight, but we've heard of a man saying it's going to destroy his business. We've heard two different speakers crying that they're going to have to sell their homes. We've had multiple people saying that they don't feel safe, they don't trust their kids walking alone. So to me, that alone in and of itself should be, you know, that should be a decision-maker right there. It shouldn't even have to go any further. But because I know it does have to go further, I'm going to bring up some other points. I've heard people mention that they support the shelter. On a surface level, do you support a shelter? Yes, it sounds wonderful. I fear God, I want to help people, I am going to support the shelter. But it takes critical thinking to think about the opposing forces that the shelter will have on our community, and that's what I'm here to talk about. I have a couple of questions, they're not rhetorical questions, these are things I'd really like to answer, too. I've reviewed the application that was submitted to approve the funding for the PADS location, and I noticed that it was incomplete. Is it a requirement that it's complete before it's submitted? Does anyone know that?
Okay, so we're not, it's not a back and forth, but I'll take down your question.
Okay, yeah, because I definitely am interested in the answers, because it was incomplete, and I did notice that the pages of conflicts of interest were left blank. So that was one of the things that I noticed off the cuff. PADS is...
Just to be clear, so which application are you talking about? The application made to us?
Yes, the application for funding that was approved by the Lake County Board.
Okay, so the application to the Lake County Board, not the application to us? I just want to know where to look.
I can give it to you, I have it saved.
After the meeting, I'll...
Okay, okay, thank you, I appreciate that. And it also says, like, you're probably familiar with it, it says, "The numbers must be listed, it must be complete," and the first page is blank, there's not applicable signature, so it's clearly not complete, but it did go through and get the approval of the funding. The next thing I'd like to go through is, we've heard multiple people say that once PADS owns this, things are going to change considerably. PADS is already running it, so I want to know if they're already getting public funding, and they talk about the dignity of the homeless, and you read the reviews of the Fairbridge Inn, across the board, you hear that it's infested with roaches, it's infested with critters, and there's mold all over. So if you truly care about the homeless, why not care about them now while you're already giving them the housing? So I think that's a critical question we need to think about here. You're getting more money, but you already have money, and these are already problems. And you can find all these reviews on Yelp, and you could also find reviews on Waukegan's PADS shelter site, or on Google, I should say, in Yelp. Next, I want to go through, I'm referring to a document called the Transform the Fairbridge Inn Into a Community Shelter, and I've noticed some discrepancies in the statistics here. So this is a document that was actually put out by PADS, and the demographics, it says 3% will struggle with drug addiction and 6% will struggle with alcohol addiction. However, when you go to the Mythbusters, it says homeless people are all drunk and drug users, we just are enabling them. Facts: Research shows that substance abuse is often a result of homelessness rather than cause. Roughly 32% of individuals experiencing homelessness suffer from addiction and alcohol, a figure approximately 20% higher than reported abuse of alcohol and illicit drugs by the general population. So within your own document, there's inconsistencies, pretty big inconsistencies. There's other things I'd like to bring to your attention. Okay, one of the things it says is that...
Ma'am, sorry, we're going to have to stop this. There was a tornado warning that was just issued, so we'll have to bring this meeting to an end. I appreciate, to say quickly, appreciate your comments and the way you've interacted with each other. So have a good evening. Other than, we're going to make a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Motion. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll get you.
I'm going to have her run that one.
Okay, now I'm going to tell Pam.
All right, but I want you to be careful. Be careful, all right?
Yeah. Yeah.